Ooh, everybody got really quiet. It must be you're ready, huh?
Everybody was.
Okay. Okay. We'll call our meeting to order, and I'm going to have a roll call by your city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The record shall reflect that all members are present.
Is the Girl Scout troop here? Oh, yeah, I see. Okay. So, the Girl Scout troop, 1387, from Rancho Vista's service unit is going to come forward, and they're going to do the pledge of allegiance, and Kaylee Crossman, the Girl Scout troop, is going to do our invocation. Right? So, come forward. And you could just have everybody join you whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kaylee's going to do the invocation.
Dear wise and loving Creator, thank you for letting us gather here today to conduct matters of business that will benefit our community. Our residents and many businesses in our beautiful city of Vista, Creator, I ask you to bless everyone in the meeting here today, including our mayor Judy Ritter, our city council, Amanda Young-Rigby, John Franklin, and Joe Green, and that you may guide their hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, so they may have the ability to work in harmony even when there is an honest disagreement. So that will represent the best interest of our community and all those who reside and work in it. I will also like to pray for our agenda today and a successful conclusion to all items brought before our Vista City Council today. In your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Are the cookie sales over? Okay. With that, we're going to move into our agenda. I'll have approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Okay. And I'll have our city attorney, Daryl Piper, bring us out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session today to discuss items CS-1 and CS-2 on today's closed-session agenda. There was no action taken that's required to be reported at this time. Thank you.
Okay. And we have one presentation this evening. It's the firefighter of the year award to engineer Derek Freed. Oh, I did my, I didn't, I got one more notice to give you. I went right over it. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos sanitation district will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos sanitation district ordinance 2006-1. So then, I would move on to the firefighter of the year award, engineer Derek Freed. The firefighter of the year award is traditionally presented at the fire department's holiday party. This year, the holiday party had to be canceled as a lilac fire was burning on our border, and we had a full commitment by our fire department members on the incident. Wanting to provide the requisite level of importance this award and this employee deserves, we have brought it here this evening. So, Fire Chief Jeff Hahn and VFFA President Miles Sweeney are going to be presenting the award, and our council's going to come down and join you.
Good evening. I am really pleased to present this award. Every year, this is one of the highlights of my year to recognize one of our firefighters for outstanding service. And Derek, I've actually known for quite a long time. I taught with his father over at Palomar College, teaching paramedics and firefighters for years. And Derek and his brother used to come, when they were about this tall, over to visit. So, we've known each other quite a long time. And I've always been impressed with Derek. He is one of those top-performing-type personalities where, when he became a paramedic, well, when he became an EMT, he learned that, and then he taught EMT. When he became a paramedic, he learned that, and then he went back and taught paramedics and tested paramedics. And then, when he tested for engineer, Derek impressed me. When he came through, not only did he learn how to pump and drive and operate the fire truck, which is what a fire engineer does, he's a guy who drives and pumps all the lines, he went to the water company and learned about the water systems, went to VID, learned about our hydrants, learned about our water systems. He went to the repair shop and spent days with the mechanics and learned about the engines and the pumps and the electric systems. And that's Derek. He goes the extra mile, which is part of why he was nominated for this award. Some of the things in his citation for this nomination, that he demonstrates a high quality of work performance and a high attention to detail, which he absolutely does. Derek has high expectations of himself and others and goes beyond with projects, extra duties, and to help others be their best. Derek now teaches and trains other people, like that gentleman in the back of the room, to learn how to be an engineer. And that, I mean, that's just part of how Derek performs. He doesn't only do that here for us at this department, but in the zone, in the area around us, he's been a raider for the Zone Engineers exam. I already told you, he teaches paramedics in the region. He's been a lead in rewriting some of the hydraulic sheets and teaching materials for other engineers in the zone. He's been a member of our apparatus design committee to help design our new fire engines, which were just delivered, yay, this month. So Derek, he just goes the extra mile. He does that for us, he does that for the fire department, he does that for our citizens, and he does it for the larger fire service community in the zone. So Derek, congratulations on firefighter of the year.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
(LAUGHING). Yeah, go for it. Sorry.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, oh, it's just fine, it's fine, City Council. My name is Miles Sweeney. I'm the president of Vista Firefighters Association, and we also want to recognize Derek also. I think the chief covered everything. A long list of accomplishments, well-deserved. I remember also when Derek arrived at Vista, and I put him under my wing and taught him everything, and he said he knew it already, so. But in all seriousness, yes, Derek hit the ground running, and he went from student to mentor, from firefighter to fire engineer. I see great things in his future, and what you don't know is that I'm very, very proud of you, and I'm also proud to call you my brother, and the local is proud of you, and we wanted to present you with this flashlight engraved "For Those Dark Nights Out in Vista."[521.16][521.16](APPLAUSE). I'm going to take one quick second, Ms. Mayor, because, as I know, nobody can do all the work that Derek's done without support from home, so I want to recognize Lindsey Freed, his wife, who has stood by him and helped him with all these accomplishments. And Lindsey, I'm going to give this to Derek. Here's a gift card for a night out on the town, for just the two of you. Enjoy it. Thank you.
Do you want to do a picture? Do you want to do a picture? Let us come down there. And also, we got a lot of our firefighters in the back over there, so I'd like to congratulate them and thank them for all that they do. So I guess you didn't, nobody wanted to take our picture, huh? Sorry, we moved out of there too fast. All right. Congratulations to all of them. So with that, we'll move on to our, the rest of our meeting. The consent calendar, the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar, and any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar, and we have seven consent items this evening. And so, do I have any pulled? There's nothing pulled by the public out there. Do we have anything pulled from our council? No? Then I take a motion to consent.
So moved.
You have a second? I have a motion and a second? Okay. Please cash your votes. The consent, those items pass unanimously. So we have, next on our agenda are our public hearings, and we have two public hearings this evening. This first one is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the 2018 and 2019 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. So the public hearing is now open, and our assistant city manager, Ally Zimmerman, is going to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. With me tonight is Housing Programs Manager Amanda Lee, and she will be providing the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. And let me just see if there's, the focus, sorry. The focus of today's item is to conduct a public hearing regarding the city's proposed 2018-19 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, and to open a 30-day comment period to allow for further community input. The city expects to receive $770,000 in CDBG funding for fiscal year 2018-19. The allocated amount is subject to change depending on the approval of the fiscal year 1819 federal budget. Over the years, there have been occasions when the city has not spent its full allocation. Currently, the city has two outstanding capital improvement projects, the senior center rehabilitation project and renovations at Bud Williamson Park. The remaining funding for these projects totals $714,539. We anticipate that the senior center project will be completed within the next year and a half. The renovations at Bud Williamson Park are still in the design phase, and we do not have an estimated time of completion. In 2015, the city council adopted the 2015-2019 CDBG consolidated plan, which identifies overall housing and community development goals for the five-year period. Activities fall under the HUD-designated categories to provide decent housing, provide suitable living environment, expand economic opportunity, and affirmatively further fair housing. The city's 2018 annual action plan outlines the city's spending plan and activities for the coming program year. CDBG funds will be used for capital projects, administration services, as well as fair housing, and social service programs. I do want to mention that this is the first year that the city will not have to set aside funding to pay debt services. In fiscal year 1718, the city made a final payment to our 108 loan. The loan was received in 1999 to assist in the development of the transit center and Vista Village projects. By paying off the loan, the city will be able to allocate between $400,000 to $500,000 in capital projects. Under the program guidelines, a maximum of 20% of the city's allocation may be used for CDBG administration. Any savings in administration can be used to supplement capital and/or housing projects, but cannot be used for public services due to the cap on these activities. Staff is recommended utilizing the full 20% available to cover staff time to administer the CDBG program, as well as for our housing services. As approved by city council in setting funding priorities and noted in the RFP package, the city's Out and About program and Operation Hope were identified to receive funding through a non-competitive process. A total of 12 funding requests for public service projects were received under the city's competitive request for proposal process. All applications met the CDBG eligibility criteria based upon the Request for Proposals guidelines, as well as applicable federal and local requirements. Based on the amount of funding available, the CDBG Citizens Advisory Committee recommends funding the seven highest-scoring applications. Funding in the amount of $12,000 for the city's Out and About Senior Transportation Program and $20,000 for Operation Hope is recommended for the respective programs. Funds allocated for Operation Hope represent the city's fair share contribution to the Alliance for Regional Solutions. The CDBG Citizen Advisory Committee recommends funding for the seven highest-scoring applications. Their Alpha Project, Boys and Girls Club, Mama's Kitchen, Meals on Wheels, North County Lifeline, Palomar Family Counseling Services, and Vista Community Clinic Wellness Center. The proposed public service programs will provide a spectrum of care under the following categories. 37% will be used for homeless prevention and intervention services. Those will go towards self-sufficiency services to help prevent homelessness, outreach to homeless to connect to resources, emergency winter shelter, and also help to remove any barriers for homeless children for success at school. 23% will be used towards health care, including mental health. It will provide access to basic medical services, preventive services, and health education, vaccinations and flu shots, and VUSD students will receive emotional support and behavioral issues will be addressed. 19% will be provided to senior services. They'll receive a delivery of up to two fresh meals a day accompanied by a safety check in home, and also transportation services. 13% will be provided to emergency services, where a provider will deliver three free meals every day of the year to residents and their dependent children who are affected by HIV or cancer and are physically or mentally incapable to prepare their own meals. Lastly, 9% will be provided towards crime prevention services or youth outreach. This will be provided through our Smart Moves program, which provides gang, alcohol, drugs, and premature sexual activity prevention, as well equips at-risk, low-income Vista youth with life skills, decision-making, and anger management. Lastly, we are recommending allocation to capital projects. On December 12, 2017, the city council directed staff to allocate available CDBG funding towards sidewalk improvements. Based on the anticipated funding, staff recommends allocating $500, $500 to sidewalk improvements. Staff is currently evaluating areas of need and are focusing on areas with high poverty rates, high population densities, and high pedestrian volumes of those traveling to schools. The first targeted area is on Boba Link and is depicted on the slide. Staff is in the process of creating a sidewalk management plan, which will inventory the entire city. A second meeting to consider and adopt the 2018-19 annual action plan is scheduled for April 24 at the city council meeting. However, the date and the amounts are dependent on the approval of the federal budget. At this time, I would like to take this opportunity to recommend and thank our CDBG advisory committee, I'm sorry, committee members. If those are here, could you please stand?
Are they here? Any of our CDBG? There we go.[1077.15][1077.15](APPLAUSE).
Again, they do take a lot of their time to read each proposal, which can be anywhere about 50 pages, and we did receive over 12 of those applications, and so I do appreciate their work. This concludes our presentation, and Ms. Zimmerman and I are available for any questions.
Okay. And I have several speakers. Would you like to hear the speakers, everyone? Okay. We'll start with the speakers. So, it's Matt Quormus, Boys and Girls Club, followed by Ben Coyle of Mama's Kitchen, and followed by Barbara Fierina with Meals on Wheels. Hi, Matt.
Hi. Hello. Mayor Ritter, members of the council. The Boys and Girls Club of Vista would like to thank the city of Vista, as well as the advisory committee for the CDBG block grants for our Smart Moves program. It's a great program that mentors at-risk youth and helps them with anger management, conflict resolution skills, and educational enrichment activities. This program has been going 10 years strong. We operate at our California Avenue site, our Rain Tree Learning Center, which is a partnership with the City of Vista Parks and Recreation Center, and then we hope to expand the program this year to a new outreach site at Brightwood College in August. And we truly appreciate this grant and helping us create more great futures, so thank you.
Thank you. And Ben Coyle, followed by Barbara Fierina, and followed by Clifford Morris.
Good evening. I just also want to echo the sentiments in saying thank you. I am Ben Coyle, I'm the Director of Development at Mama's Kitchen. We really appreciate this opportunity. We are a community-based organization. We provide home-delivered meals for Vista residents who are too sick to prepare meals for themselves. Our meals are packaged, prepared, and delivered by Vista volunteers, who do so three days a week. We've been a beneficiary of this program since 2010, and the funds that we receive really go a long way in providing healthy, medically tailored nutrition to our clients so they can improve their health outcomes, lower their healthcare costs, and improve their quality of life. The funds that we have been approved for will help provide over 5,000 meals to Vista residents, and we want to again say thank you for your support.
Thank you. And Barbara Fierina, followed by Clifford Morris.
My name's Barb Fierina. I'm the Director of Development for Meals on Wheels, and our mission is to support the independence and well-being of seniors who choose to stay in their homes and who oftentimes cannot afford quality institutional care and end up in a nursing home. We want people to stay in their homes as long as they possibly can. And Meals on Wheels provides daily delivery of fresh meals to seniors in the city of Vista, but more than that, we offer a daily safety check and a friendly visit, including every day that we deliver the meals, including holidays. All of our services are subsidized by 60%, and oftentimes even further for those clients that need it. As the population ages, 62-plus, and even in the city of Vista, it's projected to grow by 20% between 2012 and 2020, and this actually corresponds with what we've, what we're experiencing here at Meals on Wheels over the last two years. We had a 6% growth in 2016 and a 17% growth in 2017. So, 70% of the seniors served here in Vista are considered extremely low income, and that's slightly less than $1,600 a month. So, our goal over the next two years is to increase the services in Vista by 10%, and then in 19 to 15%. And on behalf of the Board of Directors, the volunteers at Meals on Wheels, and the clients, we just want to thank the CDGB Advisory Committee for their recommendation, and we respectfully request that you consider our proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Clifford Morris. He's followed by Natasha Riley and Christopher Turner.
Good evening, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, and City Councilmen. I represent Alpha Project. My name is Clifford Morris. I'm the Outreach Coordinator for Housing and Homeless People, and I came here this evening to thank you first and the committee for the funding and recommendation of that funding, and that, to let you know that we at Alpha Project will continue to do our best to engage and house clients through the CES program, who we work hand-in-hand with Regional Task Force for the Homeless, and that we will continue to do our best to work for the city of Vista in eradicating the homelessness problem here in Vista, we work for you personally to make this thing come to pass, Lord. And we thank you so much for giving us the opportunity and the funding to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Natasha Riley and Christopher Turner, followed by Kathleen Higgins.
I'm Program Manager of Vista Community Clinic, and this is Christopher Turner, our clinic manager for our wellness center. We're here to thank the city council and the CDBG Advisory Committee for their recommendation for funding our wellness center, which provides vaccinations to Vista residents.
Madam Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council, once again, my name is Chris Turner. I'm the Pediatric Clinic Manager and the Wellness Clinic Manager. Since 1998, we've been providing vaccines to the adult and children of Vista. Currently, we do about 17 vaccines right now. It's minimum cost, $15. You come in, we give you whatever vaccine you need. For our elderly population, we give the ZostaVax. It's a $275 vaccine that they're able to get for $15. We appreciate what you're doing for us and considering us for that, those funds. It will help cover the salary of our person that covers for us and does vaccines there. I'm a Navy veteran, 24 years, and once I got out, I came to Vista Community Clinic, and I'm proud to serve, and I appreciate what you have done for us, and we thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathleen Higgins, followed by Lisa Turner.
Hi, council members. 2019 will mark the 15th year that the city council has supported Operation Hope with CDBG funds. Thank you. In the first seven months of fiscal year 18, CDBG funds have helped house 93 homeless families in and around North County. As you know, we partner with the ARS, the Alliance for Regional Solutions, to either get into shelter or house non-families, because the shelter only houses, our program only houses families. I think the best story I can tell you right now is that, three years ago, a family that had a home, a middle-class lifestyle, the mother was involved in a terrible traffic accident, was rendered quadriplegic. They lost their home, they both lost their jobs, and struggled to care for their child. We were the only shelter in the entire San Diego County that would take a quadriplegic client. They have been in shelter now with us for four months. They have saved $8,000, and next week, they will be moving into their own home. So, it's working. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. And Lisa Turner?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. On behalf of Palomar Family Counseling Service, I would like to say thank you to all of you and to the CDBG Advisory Committee for recommending us for funding. Oh, and Lisa Turner, I'm the Executive Director. I think I forgot to say that. I wanted to thank you for your continued support. You've supported Palomar Family Counseling for several years now. We use the funds to provide counseling services to children and youth who might not receive them otherwise. This year, we're using the funds to deliver counseling services to needy youth at Bobièr and Grapevine Elementarys. All of the students we see are very low-income. Many of them come from households, and come from families that are struggling with a whole host of family stressors. It might include addiction, incarceration, family violence, poverty, frequent moves, lots of disruption. But by providing services in the schools, we're able to get these young students services that they need and that their families want them to get. Very often, families want their child to get intervention, but because of transportation challenges or working several jobs, or whatever it may be, if they have to take their child to a clinic, whether it's our clinic here on Vill Tarris, or whether it's another clinic, Vista Community Clinic, or something along those lines, it's just far too challenging for them to actually get, make those appointments and get their kids there. So by seeing that the students in the schools were able to really meet that need and remove that barrier for the family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to again thank our CDBG members in the audience, Lenore Avril and Gary Caravoo out there. I think that they stood up before, but I just wanted to thank them. Those are two of our members that are here tonight. So with that, I see Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too wanted to thank our CDBG commission for the work you guys put in. But I also wanted to thank the organizations that are represented here. I thought it was important that you would be here to let the community of Vista know the good work that you're doing, and that the money that we're, as a city, dedicating to your organizations is helping a lot of, a lot of the members of our community, some in dire need, and others just needing a small boost to make themselves better community members. So, thank you all for coming, and I also wanted to, I guess, thank staff for the work you guys have put into this as well. And I'm really excited about the sidewalks that are going in at Boba Link. I remember as a kid, when we moved from the Bobièr area up to North Avenue, I used to walk on Boba Link to get to my house, and there's never been sidewalks there. So it's going to be exciting to see that finally going in, and I'm very much in support of continuing to build our sidewalks in that area. It's an older area, but there's a lot of families that live in that area that their kids do walk, and it'd be great to have safe- kids do walk, and it'd be great to have a safe place for them to walk. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion in support of this recommendation.
Councilmember Green.
All right, I again just wanted to thank the CDBG Advisory Board, and also you, Amanda Lee, for all of your work on it, specifically Boys and Girls Club, Mama's Kitchen, Meals on Wheels, Alpha Project, Vista Community Clinic, Operation Hope, and Palomar Family Council Services for showing up tonight. Really appreciate you guys speaking about all the good work you do. As a kid who grew up here on East Los Angeles Street in Vista, I was a recipient of some of those grants and scholarships growing up for the Boys and Girls Club, and we didn't have any insurance. I was raised by a single mom, and Vista Community Clinic took care of all my boo-boos and flu bugs and colds. So this money does go to great causes, and as a grown man, I appreciate your organizations more than you'll ever know. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to also add my thanks to these organizations, too. You all do such fabulous things for our community, and it is very, very much appreciated. And I don't know how often you hear "thank you," but I want to be sure to say thank you to every one of you. And in addition to what you do that's listed out, I know some of you go above and beyond to help other members of the community when you're able to do so, and that is very much appreciated, and I thank you. And I appreciate you all being here tonight to share a couple of stories with us. And with that, I will go ahead and second the Deputy Mayor's motion.
And did you close the public hearing, you guys?
I think, John, Deputy Mayor.
I closed the public hearing as part of my motion.
Okay, and then this opened for a 30-day review period. So, okay, do we need to vote on that? Yeah, okay. So I'll call for the vote. The motion passes unanimously. And that takes us to our public hearing number two. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the Central Vista Business Improvement District Annual Levy. And the public hearing is now open, and Economic Development Director Kevin Hamm is going to provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Kevin Hamm, Director of Economic Development. This public hearing is being held to confirm the Central Vista Business Improvement District Annual Report for the 2018-19 fiscal year. All assessments, boundaries, and programs remain unchanged for the upcoming fiscal year. If no majority protest exists from those being assessed, the proposed assessment can be approved through the adoption of the attached resolution. Staff recommends approving the attached resolution, confirming the annual report, and levying the assessments for fiscal year 18-19. I and CVBID Chair, Board Chair David Lowen, are here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
I just want to say thanks to the VVBA for all the good work that they're doing, and I think we've talked recently as a council about the direction things are going there and future possibilities, and I think, you know, I asked the city manager to send me the notice that we sent out to all of our business owners so I could better understand the process that we go through, and right now, I think silence means consent. So I appreciate the good work that our business owners downtown are doing to grow our economy down there. So with that, I wanted to make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the resolution next in order.
Okay. Actually, I'll second that, and I want to thank them also. I think they do a great job downtown and all the different events that they're doing, and so I just appreciate the VVBA. It's, you know, because they're all volunteers now on the board, and so that's not an easy job. So with that, I guess I will call for a vote, and if anybody else has a... The motion passes unanimously. And that takes us to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is the Climate Action Plan, and Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley is going to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a discussion item to review our Climate Action Plan update. Our Climate Action Plan was identified as a mitigation measure to reduce a significant impact from greenhouse gas or GHG emissions when our general plan was adopted in 2012. Following the general plan approval, the city contracted with Rincon Consultants to prepare our Climate Action Plan, which was completed and approved by the council in 2013, and that's also included in your packet for your information. The current Climate Action Plan is a plan to reduce GHG emissions from community and municipal activities in Vista in support of the state's efforts under Assembly Bill 32. It allows tiering and streamlining and environmental review and a cumulative review of greenhouse gas emissions for development, and it helps achieve the goals in our general plan 2030 of lowering energy costs, reducing air pollution, and improving public health and quality of life. The current Climate Action Plan is based on a baseline from 2005 and projects to 2020. We are updating our plan to essentially take us past that 2020 date in order to address climate action impacts beyond 2020. The current threshold is established under AB 32 is 15% below our 2005 baseline level. And the plan includes a number of municipal and community climate action measures to reduce emissions, which I'll go through with you, as well as an implementation and monitoring program and possible funding sources. So to just briefly run through our current Climate Action Plan, the 2005 Emissions Inventory evaluates five major greenhouse gas emission generating categories, being transportation, commercial and industrial land uses, residential land uses, solid waste and wastewater, and each of those categories is evaluated in terms of future growth in those areas to determine what the GHG emissions are currently and projected to be in the future. So if you look at the table in the lower part of the slide here, it identifies what our baseline emissions are, what our 2020, quote, "business as usual" forecast is, which is basically with no program changes, what our emissions level would be in 2020, and then what the target would be, which is 15% below that baseline level, and the amount that we need to reduce it by, which is roughly 27,000 metric tons of CO2. So in reference to that reduction amount, we've identified a number of climate action measures in these general areas of municipal operations, energy, transportation, land use, and solid waste, which each have specific measures identified under those categories for how those reductions will be achieved. So you can see from the table that the most reduction we can achieve in our current cap is in the area of energy, the second being transportation and land use policies, and then some smaller reductions in solid waste and municipal operations. You can see the total reduction at the bottom is roughly 27,000, and our reduction estimate from the measures that we've identified in our plan are 32,000, so we would get there in 2020 if we implement all of the programs that are in our current cap. So in updating our cap, we're looking at a new inventory using data from 2012 through 2014. It looks like our new baseline will be 2012. We'll model, again, business-as-usual emissions projections for future years of 2020, 2030, and 2035, and establish recommended targets for each of those years. Then we'll go through a process of reviewing the action measures that we need to adopt in order to get to those targets, and comparable to our current plan, adopt an implementation program, and identify funding sources. One of the focuses of our cap update currently is also to provide consistency with some of the other regional plans for Sandag's purposes, preparing their transportation plan update. They want to have climate action plans from all of the region's cities that are consistent in how they're analyzed. So we're following that protocol. Included in your packet is an emissions inventory from 2012 through 2014, which identifies the emissions factors that we evaluated. We've broken down the five categories a little further from the 2005 study, and there are seven major categories, which are shown here on the slide. The biggest one, as I'm sure you all know, is on-road transportation. That generates the most GHG electricity. Is the secondary, so those two combined are, you know, more than 80% of what are GHG emissions, and then smaller in the areas of natural gas, off-road transportation, solid waste, water, and wastewater. So we've inventoried what those emissions are. We've identified what the estimates would be in our business-as-usual projections for the future years. This graph shows where we would be in 2020, 2030, and 2035 using those estimates. You can see there's a dip that occurs initially from a number of measures that are being undertaken at the state and federal level, but then it starts to ramp up again as a result of the growth that we're projecting under our general plan. So the state has identified a number of targets that are consistent with state law. This is following the state's scoping plan targets, so it's a little confusing, but just to explain, the 2020 goal is not shown on here because it's only slightly lower than where we currently are. It's about 4% to get to the state's 2020 target, so we expect to get to that just following the current programs that are in place. The 2030 target is based on the Senate Bill 32, which is 40% below 1990 levels, and if you calculate what the state's current GHG inventory is, it's about a 42% reduction to get to that target under SB 32. And then following to 2050, there's an 80% reduction goal below the 1990 levels, which was established by an executive order at the state level. And again, following the 2012 inventory, that would be about an 81% reduction. So in summary, about a 41%, 42% reduction to 2030, about an 81% reduction in 2050 to get to where the state would like us to be. So projecting those into Vista's numbers, this graph shows, with the black line, our business-as-usual GHG emissions, again, with no policy change where we expect to go over the next 30 years, 20 years. And then the green line shows where we would need to get in order to achieve the reductions that, again, were identified by the state. So for 2020, you can see we're already going to get there under our business-as-usual model, which is 4% below our baseline 2012 year. But in 2030 and 2035, we have larger amounts to achieve, which we won't get to under our business-as-usual programs, as shown by this chart. So in evaluating how we're going to achieve these emission reductions, we take into account what current federal and state programs are being undertaken right now, and we include those in the estimate. So there's a number of state and federal efforts underway right now, which are shown on the screen, to increase our renewables by up to 50% by 2030, a number of solar policies and programs that are being implemented at the state level, as well as energy efficiency programs, and then tailpipe standards, vehicle standards at the federal and state level. And when we implement all those, we identify that that business-as-usual number goes down. So in the chart here, you can see the black line that was trending before is now broken down by the amount of reduction that you'll get from each of those programs that identified, including the renewables, the solar, the energy efficiency, and the vehicle programs. And then there's a small gap left. That's the local gap that we have to achieve in Vista versus the state and federal programs. And that current gap projected estimate is about 54,000 metric tons of CO2 by 2030, and about 121,000 metric tons of CO2 by 2035. Just to put it into context, our current plan has to get to roughly 27,000, so we're doubling that in the 2030 year, and then multiplying that by five roughly for 2035. So we've identified the gap we need to get to. Our next step in this process will be identifying what measures we're going to rely on to get those reductions. Our current plan has a number of measures, which I'm just going to run through with you to give you an idea of what's in the current plan, and then we'll be further evaluating how we're going to get to those larger targets. So under our current plan, under municipal operations, again, it's a fairly small amount of reduction you can see that we get from this, but capital implementation is essentially staffing. Energy-efficient lighting is to convert traffic and streetlights to LED. We had a goal of 80%. We've already achieved that. I think we've got close to 95% of all of our streetlights and traffic lights converted to LED. Renewable energy projects to install PV, solar, or other energy efficiency improvements. We've done that at our senior center, and we're working on a project at our public works yard. Employee commute alternatives, which has a target of a 5% employee commute reduction through transit and bike-walking alternatives, and municipal recycling, which we're targeting a 10% reduction in waste by 2020. Under energy measures, where we have a fair amount of ability to save in GHG, there are energy efficiency building standards, which we've implemented under the Cal Green Code. Those are currently required at the state level. Energy efficiency in existing buildings, this is looking at where we can conserve energy in both municipal facilities as well as residential and commercial construction. Again, the Green Code pretty much dictates this. We're also looking at incentives for future construction to implement more energy efficiency. Smart meters is a program largely driven by SCG&E to allow people to regulate the energy usage at their homes during certain times of the day and under the programs that they provide, and we provide opportunities for that. Small-scale renewable energy is PV installations at the residential level, which we have a lot going on, and we have a fairly efficient program in place to accommodate. Tree planting, we had a goal of 500 trees by 2020. We're a little under halfway there for that. In transportation, bicycle and pedestrian travel is pretty much implementation of our bicycle master plan and sidewalk programs that we've talked about. Transit is to improve access and facilities in accessing the Sprinter stations and the transit centers. Commute trip reduction is employee assistance or transportation demand programs to encourage carpooling. And smart growth was a goal of 5% of our city's residential growth within the smart growth designated areas. And then finally, in terms of existing measures, we have expanded recycling, which is essentially targeting the recycling efforts that Edco is undertaking, both the multifamily and in the future at the single-family level, and then reducing construction and demolition debris through recycling, which we have a program of 50% diversion right now. There's also programs for community outreach and education and adaptation, which is the impacts to our physical environment as a result of climate change. Those don't provide reductions, but we are looking at those as part of the plan. So just a quick summary, we have identified our baseline, we have a revised target for 2020, we have new targets for 2030 and 2035 that we have to achieve, and we've identified what that amount of reduction is supposed to be for us to get there. And as I mentioned, we're not close to that under our current cap, so we're going to have to expand our measures beyond where we are today. So we held a community meeting in January to present the information on our inventory and take feedback from the community. The notes from that are included in the agenda report. There were a number of recommendations that we received from the public, which are shown here. I won't go through all of them. There's a fairly extensive list in the agenda report, but a lot of good comments from the public about what they'd like to see us look at. The last public meeting we had was a Planning Commission review on February 20th of this year. Again, we had a lot of good input from the public. The Commission recommended that we provide a professional presentation on community choice energy, that we present a comparison of measures that other cities are using around us and how successful those have been, that we really try to balance the measures that we're going to implement and feasibility of new development, that we consider a park master plan to look at new open space opportunities, we evaluate new opportunities for electric vehicle charging and infrastructure, we incentivize photovoltaic and solar installations and evaluate new projects in city facilities, that we increase the urban tree canopy if we can, and evaluate opportunities for community projects for tree planting, that we provide additional information regarding future organics and recycling operations, and that we engage the school district to join us in this effort to try to implement some energy efficiency projects in the school facilities. So the next steps is we will hold a series of community meetings to drill into the measures more and try to identify what might be feasible for the city to look at. We'll also be having workshops at the Planning Commission and City Council as part of that effort to develop what those will be. Following that, we'll draft a Climate Action Plan document, which we expect in the fall of this year. It'll go through a public review process, and then we'll come back to the Planning Commission and City Council for public hearings, which I expect probably after the first of the year. And that's my staff presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Do you want to, I see, I have two of you want to speak. I have 21. Okay, you want to go first? Okay. Okay.
Can I say something?
Deputy Mayor, go.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for all your work, because I know this has been a big task. And, you know, when the mayor and I and others here go down to Sandag, you know, there's a list of cities that have a plan in place, and Vista's always listed. There's cities that don't even have a plan here in the county, and we're on our second version of it. So it's just great to be able to sit at Sandag and notice that we're on our second version when some of these other cities don't even have a plan at all. So I want to thank staff for all the work, because this is a lot of work that goes into this, for coming up with this. And... for coming up with this. And just one of the things I did want to, it sounds like the public's thinking the same way. I'd like to see Vista unified. How involved are they in this climate action plan? Or do they have their own climate action plan?
Not that I'm aware of. We have sent the notices to the district. That's pretty much the extent of it. Following the council's direction, I was going to reach out to their facilities person over there and see if we could maybe get them to collaborate with us a little more on it, but we're just at the start of this process, so we haven't engaged them too much yet.
So we have 22 speakers this evening, and I'm sure you're all in support of this, and I thank you for being here. I would like to see if you would approach VUSD. I mean, for me, the first thing that comes to mind is buses. You know, there's not that many buses anymore, so that creates a lot of traffic in our streets in the mornings. And, you know, the greenhouse gases just go up, is those people who want to get their kids to school safely. So just asking for you to support us in approaching VUSD. So with that, I'd like to listen to the public.
Councilmember Franklin?
Okay, we'll start with the speakers. Okay, and so you each have three minutes, and what I'll do is I'll call your names, and I'll call three names for the speaker, and then the other two, if they'll line up over here on the side, so that we can move it through faster, okay? So please be respectful of each other, and no clapping, and just you're the council chambers, and we appreciate your respect. So I'll start with Ann Force, and she'll be followed by Adeline Woodward, and followed by Raymond, it looks like Aller.
Hi, I'm Ann Force. My husband and I bought a home and moved to Vista in 2003, and we installed solar panels that year. And we think we've saved like $200 a month in these 15 years. It's come to about $36,000. And plus, we're putting excess generation into the grid, giving, you know, energy to SDG&E. We want the Vista City Council to approve and move forward with the Community Energy Choice Program. This is a program where people who use energy can tell the energy company, SDG&E, "We want you to use 50% renewables for the next five years. We want you to use 75% renewables for the next five years, you know, five years after that." And gradually, that's going to add to the community's choice of, you know, reducing petroleum products, almost boycotting them as you get to the end. And then we want to encourage investment in clean, green energy. Our country needs to be switched over to 100% renewables by 2027. And I noticed in Vista's energy program, there hasn't been any solar or renewable energy project since 2012. So I really hope you'll all make a start, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Adeline Woodward, followed by Raymond Aller, followed by Karina Contreras.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Adeline Woodward with SDG&E. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for the City of Vista. Good to see you tonight, and thank you so much for allowing us to have this opportunity to talk about your climate action plan update. SDG&E is proud to be your guys' partner. We're striving to be the cleanest, safest, and most reliable utility for our customers. We're proud to say that at the end of 2017, we're around 45% renewable energy, up from 43% in 2016. All of that renewable energy is from 61 steel in the ground projects, and doesn't include any rooftop solar content in our territory. The rest of the energy that we deliver is from low-carbon natural gas, which is the backbone of our energy supply system here in San Diego County. When looking and reviewing your guys' climate action plan and the emissions, majority of them you'll see is from transportation, and that's a really important area for us to tackle. This is why we have been working on different programs, such as Power Your Drive, which installs electric vehicle charging stations in places of business and multifamily unit complexes. And we've also filed a really aggressive application in response to SB 350, which would install charging stations in residential homes, Port of San Diego Airport, and a few other locations. Another way to reduce your greenhouse gas emissions is to reduce energy consumption, and we're really proud to be partnering with the city on energy efficiency programs. U.S. customers pay into these programs and should be utilizing them. We have SDG&E Marketplace, which customers, both residential and commercial, can get rebates on different products that are energy efficient. We also have our Eco Choice Program, which customers can choose to purchase 50 to 100% renewable energy from projects that are all built within San Diego and Imperial Counties. Lastly, SDG&E has been making great strides in battery storage and advanced technologies. Battery storage allows us to harness this renewable energy and utilize it while remaining grid, while keeping our reliability. Use this as a resource moving forward and continue to, I'm happy to assist and answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you. Raymond Aller, followed by Karina Contreras, followed by Christine McCardle.
Hi, I'm Raymond Aller, and Mayor Ritter, and the members of the city council. Honored to be able to speak with you. I urge you to enact a stronger climate action plan. Vista really should be viewed as the leader and pioneer for the city's communities of California. We have that opportunity, and we should pursue it. One of the things that Vista could be is be a magnet for shopping, entertainment, and commerce. People will drive here, shop, and go home. But they won't if we don't have electric vehicle recharging. There's many communities in San Diego County that I do not go to because I can't get home from them. So please think about building a much stronger infrastructure of recharging, of electric car recharging. And the 100% clean energy goal, as soon as it could possibly be attained, maybe 2030. Community choice energy, converting the city fleet to electric, as well as the school buses that was mentioned. And there are just many measures that can be used to make our city more energy efficient and more supportive of our continued life in Southern California. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Karina Contreras, followed by Christine McCardle, followed by Susan Davison.
Hello, my name is Karina Contreras, and I'm really glad that we are reviewing our climate action plan. You know, I'm glad that SDG&E is here. I would like to see what their opinion is on something like community choice energy, just because I'm not certain that the ECO program that you can join even is creating enough energy for everybody who is interested in joining something like that. So I would like to get their, you know, honest opinion on possibly going towards community choice energy, because honestly, there's no other way that we can meet our greenhouse gas emission reductions. And it's just a smart thing to do, which is why so many of our neighbors are doing the feasibility study. I was really, you know, saddened that Vista did not want to participate in that study. But, you know, we have a great opportunity here to implement some of these changes that need to happen, just for the well-being of our community. And I know that, you know, I love my community. You all love your community. Let's really make it a green jewel of the '78. You know, we're a small city. I love the breweries. I love the restaurants, but we're not going to out-brewery and out-restaurant our neighbors. So we really need to move forward with creating a city for the future. El futuro es joven aquí en Vista. The future is young, meaning that we have a really young population here. And we are doing them a disservice if we don't implement a more progressive climate action plan that really addresses some of the issues that we have, right? With high density, a lot of people walking in, you know, the townsite area, because they have to, right? That's their mode of transportation. So let's make sure that they have sidewalks. Let's make sure that we increase our trees. Since we're only about, you know, 50% to that goal, let's get some more shade in District 1. That would be fabulous. And let's take a look at our transportation. You know, there's a lot of room for improvement in our transportation, even if it would just match people's schedules a little bit better. I know, I work at about 6:00 to 6:30 a.m. in the morning, and I've gone out at 4:50, started walking from my house, went to the Vista Transit Center, and there's a lot of people already walking at that time, riding their bikes. Let's get some Class A bike lanes to make sure that people are protected. I haven't been able to ride my bike since like 60 pounds ago. So I'm really looking forward to be able to ride my bike safely, at least from where I live to downtown. That would be a great thing if we can implement something like that. So I appreciate you all looking at this, and let's do something good for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine McCardle. Susan Davison, followed by Heather Williams.
Hi, thank you so much, Mayor Ritter and council members. I believe you've already received a letter from the Sierra Club North County Group. If you haven't, I have a few extra copies. I'm here to support these recommendations and strongly urge you to support them, to consider them in updating Vista's climate action plan. Whether we believe in climate change or not, this problem is affecting all of us, and will have an even more dire impact in the future. Time has been lost in this fight, and given the current stance and lack of leadership on the federal level, even more of the responsibility falls to the state and local municipalities. In addition, on the same topic, perhaps a little more indirectly, I would like to submit a request that our city join with San Diego and 35 other sister cities in California who have passed a resolution opposing in the federal energy policy of allowing oil drilling off our coasts. This would be a huge step backward at a time when we need to double down on our efforts moving forward. I applaud your efforts to date and encourage brave and audacious action in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Davison, followed by Heather Williams, followed by Karen Aguilar.
Good evening, mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak to you. I am a Vista resident since 1993, and I'm an urban planner by trade, and my proficiency in business has been actually energy efficiency, and being up in Sacramento and working on different programs. So I want to actually stand here in support of the work that you're going to do with the cap, and request that when you create a cap, when you revise the cap for the city, that you create lots of options, because you can see that the energy efficiency world is changing very quickly, and that you consider things like the CCA. We call them CCA or CCE, CCE, which is Community Choice Energy, which was really adopted in 2002. It's been around that long. It's taken quite a while for it to actually gain any attention in the state. There's now 14 different jurisdictions or programs in the State of California that are actually doing this now, and we actually have it occurring down here in San Diego. And so the hope is, when John was talking about the requests that you have from the city and from the public, that you would actually consider some education process on this. So when you make your decisions for the city and you do the draft cap for the city, it includes a wide variety of things that allow you to make adequate choices for all your residents. I also want to say that the cap actually is incredibly important. In some ways, it's not really required. You know, we can always say, no, we don't want it, but the truth is, if we want to streamline the sequel process for this city and have development that can be supported and not be sued, then it's actually something that needs to be put in place. So I commend you on putting the 2012 in place, because I know you guys, both the city council and the planning commission, you know, look for development to actually grow our city, and that's incredibly important to us. On a side note, you made a comment earlier about Vista School District. There are an amazing array of programs in place. There's something called Prop 39, which actually is ending for the community colleges. But Prop 39 is this funding program in the State of California that lets the local school districts K through 12 actually access funding for solar for their actually schools at either a free or very low interest rate. So if you would like me to give your city staff some information on that, so they can actually pursue that idea, I'd be happy to do so, because there's some programs in place. You also have a very strong relationship with SDG&E. They are our local utility. They've done great work for us down here. They are a good partner to the city, most of the cities, and they have a huge variety of programs. And so part of this process would include an education process for the residents and for the businesses, as well as the city council, that includes what kind of money and funding is out there. For example, I ran across an article today that was for one of the local utilities that has zero financing for loans for actually doing energy efficiency in businesses. And so there's an amazing array of programs that SDG&E creates every couple of years.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay. That you can actually access. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Heather Williams, followed by Karen Aguilar, followed by Diana Aguilar.
Hello, my name is Heather Williams. I'm a resident of Vista for 21 years. I believe that climate is something that we all have to be aware of, how important it is, because it affects all of us. So here's my simple statement. Thank you for the opportunity to make a statement. I support CCE, Community Choice Energy, and I also support an ambitious community action plan with a goal of 100% clean energy by 2030. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Aguilar, followed by Diana Aguilar, followed by, it looks like you, Ellen Tetchy?
Hi, my name is Karen. I am a student at Rancho Buena Vista High School. I've been living in Vista for 14 years. I am part of Poder Popular, which is a group of work of community group. Projects with VCC and the City of Vista. We originally won a temporary raised buffer that makes walking safer for students like me. Thank you, City of Vista, for helping us accomplish like that as we begin to work on the climate action plan. I'll urge you to keep working with Poder Popular throughout planning and implementation phases. Thank you for your time. I look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you. Diana Aguilar, followed by Yeklin Tetchy, followed by Abdullah Diaz.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Diana Aguilar y soy miembro de Poder Popular. Somos un grupo de residentes organizados de la comunidad. Somos estudiantes, padres de familia, abuelos, trabajadores y trabajadoras que viven en la ciudad de Vista. Venimos hoy para recalcar la importancia de la salud y bienestar de nuestros hijos, nuestras familias, y generaciones futuras.
I'm going to translate. My name is Rosa, and my name is Diana Aguilar. I'm a member of Poder Popular. We're a group of organized residents here in Vista. We're students, parents, grandparents, workers that live here in Vista, and we're here to talk about the health and well-being of our kids, our families, and our future generations.
El plan de acción climática dice que la participación comunitaria es esencial para lograr el objetivo de reducción de emisión de gases de Vista. Quiero decir que la participación comunitaria también es crítica en las fases de planificación de la ciudad.
So the climate action plan currently highlights the importance of community participation in order to meet our goals for greenhouse gas emissions. I also want to highlight that community participation is important in all city planning phases.
Para aumentar como ciudad también podemos mejorar la salud y el bienestar de los residentes más vulnerables a través de las siguientes maneras.
As a city, we're able to help the health and well-being of our residents that are the most vulnerable with the following measures.
Para aumentar la resiliencia de todos los residentes debemos comprender quiénes son y dónde están las personas más vulnerables. Los impactos climáticos son mayormente locales, por lo que le recomendamos que realicen una evaluación del clima y la vulnerabilidad de la salud de la ciudad de Vista como parte de este proceso de planificación.
So in order to increase the resilience of all Vista residents, we have to understand who the most vulnerable are and where they live. Climate impact is mostly local, and so we urge you to conduct an evaluation on vulnerability impact across the city as part of your planning process.
Gracias por su atención.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It looks like you, Ellen Tetchy. Did I do okay? Followed by Abdullah Diaz, followed by Peola Lascas.
Hi, my name is Yeklin Tetchy. I am a senior at Vista High School. I am part of the organization of Poder Popular. I'm working on a project around the community health that John has been helping us with. I encourage the City of Vista to keep working with us on things like the climate action plan. I am proud to work on a project that makes the City of Vista a healthier city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Abdullah Diaz, followed by Peola, followed by Rosa Flores. Abdullah Diaz, followed by Peola, followed by Rosa Flores.
Buenas tardes. Hola, mi nombre es Abdullah Diaz y soy líder de Poder Popular. Somos un grupo de residentes organizados de la comunidad. Somos estudiantes, padres de familia, abuelos, trabajadores de que viven en Vista.
Good evening. This is Abdullah Diaz. She is part of Poder Popular as well and she's a leader in there. She's coming here in a group as well who are representing grandfathers, grandmothers like herself, families, workers who live here in the City of Vista.
Adicionalmente, sugerimos que utilicen las relaciones que tienen con las organizaciones del Departamento de Salud Regional del Condado de San Diego, SANDA.
Likewise, we would also like you, if you could consider the relationships that you all have with the county and Sandag as well, to continue this work.
Sugerimos un enfoque en medidas que incrementen el transporte activo y el uso de tierra propiedad, tomando en cuenta las metas relacionadas a reducir las emisiones de gases que resultan en el uso de los vehículos.
We would also ask if you can look at increasing active transportation and the land use as well, and also looking at the goals that are related to that, and also seeking how to reduce gas emissions from vehicles.
Por favor requieran la construcción de caminos seguros para ciclistas y usuarios de transporte público en el área del norte de Santa Fe.
And please to require the construction of safe pathways for both cyclists and pedestrians in public transportation in the area of North Santa Fe.
Es importante notar que el tema de desperdicios de alimentos no es parte del Plan 2013. Sugerimos incorporar medidas relacionadas a la importancia del abono al nivel residencial y comercial.
And it's important to note that the food waste is not part of the 2013 plan. And we also ask if you could incorporate the use of food as a compost and add a level of residential and commercial use.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Peola Lescas? Are you Peola?
Yes, that's me.
Followed by Rosa Flores and followed by Frank Sloot.
Hi there, my name is Paola Lescas. I'm also a resident of Vista here, here with Poder Popular as well. We understand that climate impact's on a regional basis. It's not enough, right? We would like to have an assessment made on who and where these people are most vulnerable and who's getting the most impact, right? This is why we're asking for this assessment that should be made at a citywide. There is also a vulnerability assessment, and we also ask that you include scientific research in that manner. There is climate change on human health in the United States. It's a scientific assessments that can be found. We'd be more than happy to share. In regards to transportation and land use, we would also like to see an increase of mode share for people who walk and bike around specifically, right, in North Santa Fe and Townsite area, and also to utilize local complete street checklists in order to align to Sandag and their recommendations to also require, as Abdullah has said, right, that public transportation in North Santa Fe, right, and seeking ways to make those pathways much safer for the residents who live there. I would also like to point out that, the same point, that we should look into food waste, right, and how can that also be part of this climate action plan that is being updated? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Rosa Flores, followed by Frank Sloot, followed by Sebastian, looks like Soraka?
Good evening, my name is Rosa Flores. I am also a member of Poder Popular and actually work for Vista Community Clinic. I'm program supervisor out of Health Promotion Center. First, thank you for your support earlier today. I'm really excited to hear that news. But today, I'm personally here to talk a little bit about the Climate Action Plan. I'm happy to build a bridge between Vista Unified School District and your efforts around the Climate Action Plan revision process. There's actually a coalition that's already in place that's seeking to improve policy here in Vista, so we're happy to make that connection. We actually just recently presented at the Vista Unified School District's Wellness Council on our work that we've been doing around policy change and environmental change in Townsite that John is a part of. And then furthermore, I have an extensive list of recommendations for cap review, but I know where John works, so I can email that to him. Most importantly, I just want to highlight that there's mainly four buckets that we want to focus on. The main one, the first one, one of my colleagues already mentioned about the vulnerability assessment. It's really important to know who our vulnerable populations are and where they live. And also, when you do your community outreach and education, it's important to address these communities first, I think. The second measure that we'd like to look at is transportation and land use. We'd really like stronger language and implementation around encouraging active transportation across Vista. Our particular interest is in Townsite. So we definitely have researched through our county partners and UCSD and a plethora of other organizations that can help specify where the work needs to focus. We also think it's important to take into account solid waste measures. Food is a huge, food waste is a huge contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, and I think that that measure could be stronger in the current climate action plan, including composting, as my colleague mentioned, at a residential level, but also at a commercial level. And lastly, we'd like to emphasize the importance of community education and outreach measures. We urge, so to keep the community involved, but we also urge city to consider a budget for interpretive services at all planning meetings and for bilingual education during the implementation phases of the plan. We urge you to involve communities and other CBOs in the implementation process to ensure that the city is maximizing the co-benefits for the health and the environment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Frank Sloot, followed by Sebastian, is it Soraka? Followed by Kathleen Boyle.
Hello, council members. I started teaching here in Vista in 1980 and I still do, part-time at Vista Adult School. And so my kids have grown up here and what I've noticed is the lack of safety for pedestrians and as well as bike riders. And for me, as a bike, I used to ride my bike a lot and kind of get out on the sidewalks and get chased off, but now it's more like you ride in a painted area on a road that, you know, I'm too superstitious and kind of more conservative now in my age that I'm not going to get on that. And I'd like to have our bike paths and our walking paths to suit the community so people go into work along the corridors, along the busy corridors, don't have to worry about being hit. And I just got a little grandson who's going to be a year old and I want him to grow up into a community that has community choice energy and that, just a better, safer place for all of Vista, and I know we can do that here. Okay? So thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian, followed by Kathleen Boyle, followed by Sarah Spinks.
Buenas tardes. Good evening. My name's Sebastian Sarria with Climate Action Campaign. You have an opportunity before you tonight, an opportunity to do what's right for our families and children in updating their current climate action plan so it's effective and makes a real impact in our communities. As noted in our cap report card last month, the San Diego region is leading the nation in climate action. And we're here to ensure that the City of Vista does not get left behind and joins the ranks of San Diego, Encinitas, Carlsbad, and others in having an effective climate action plan for their residents. To do that, a city cap that is beneficial should have the following. Commitment to 100% clean energy through Community Choice Energy, which has been adopted by 108 cities across California, saving money on energy bills and bringing competition, choice, and local control to the electricity sector. Number two, mode share targets that specify what percent of commuters will travel by bike, walk, and transit. Number three, a call for zero waste. Number four, inclusion of a tree canopy target. Number five, ensuring that the updated cap targets are legally binding. And finally, equity targets. The cap should be developed and implemented to ensure that communities that have been economically left behind and already deal with the most pollution are the first to benefit from cap strategies, including job opportunities that go along with cap implementation. We thank the city staff for your continued work and are hopeful that the city council will move forward in the right direction. An environmentally sustainable, inclusive, and economically just future is within our reach, so let's make sure our families and businesses benefit from it sooner rather than later. We look forward to partnering with you on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Sarah Spinks, followed by Scott Sexton.
Hi, good evening. Good to see you all again. I saw you a couple of weeks ago at the goal-setting meeting and I was very happy to see so many kind of ideas and thoughts that I totally agreed with, a lot of the buzzwords, I was very much in favor of. Some of those were decreased traffic, fiscal responsibility, murals to alleviate graffiti. I took notes, so I know which one of you said all these. Buying more land for more green spaces, more pocket parks, and I just loved all these ideas, controlled growth. There was no mention of climate, climate action, climate action plan, none of that. I didn't hear any of you say that. So maybe later you would have said, oh whoops, how could I not have thought of that? But none of you thought of that or said that. So I'd like to encourage you to move that up, the list of your priorities mentally. And in the similar vein, a lot of you were very happy and I agree, it's a wonderful thing that you did to bring, apparently not too long ago Vista was, what, in the red, totally in the red, and now you've brought Vista up into a more fiscally, you said, responsible city where 35% of our money is saved away for not a rainy day but an emergency. We wish it were more rainy days. So in that same way, I would like to encourage you to not just try to meet the goals we have. That would be like keeping it at 35. Councilman Franklin wanted, let's go to 40. We shouldn't meet these goals. They're the minimum goals. We should try to exceed these goals that we have. So if your child came to you and said, I got 82, that's passing, you wouldn't like that very much, just saying, go for the B+, go for the A, come on, do a little better. So what I would like to encourage, nothing original, what people have said, I was at that meeting, so some of those questions I heard and inputted on. Community choice energy, it's almost like this unicorn. Does it exist? We keep talking about it, but we don't hear anything back from you about it. So maybe the feasibility study was seen as too expensive, but maybe if we could just dip our toe in and see what it might do for Vista, I think the time has come. The clean energy, coordination of mass transit, so we do have the Sprinter which has helped a lot of people. We need more coordination. How do people maybe get to it? Maybe some little shuttle buses to go around town that could bring people to the Sprinter would help a lot, would cut down on the vehicles. And the tree canopy, I think that was mentioned by a couple of people the other day at your goal-setting meeting, but in Chicago, when they planted trees, they had to do it on the roofs of the buildings because they don't have so many green areas. It amazingly reduced the temperatures and cleaned the air. So they had a huge wake-up call when a very hot summer, a lot of their most, the word vulnerable has been used, a lot of their most vulnerable people died, by the hundreds, I think it was thousands of people died, older people.
I need you to wrap up.
I will, thank you.
Time is up.
So we can use those trees to good purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Spinks, followed by Scott Sexton, followed by Sharon Alvis. Sharon?
Hi, I just think it's really amazing that we have a climate action plan, and it made me start thinking about, about 15 years ago, I had the opportunity to live abroad in Germany, and I feel like maybe a little bit more that direction we can go. I noticed when I lived there, everywhere there was recycling, every public trashcan separated the trash into five different categories. There were bike paths everywhere that connected parks of the town, connected different towns. People, I had a bus that came every 15 minutes. People used all the things because they were really easy to use. I imagine, I can't even imagine what it's like there now. I would love to go back and visit. I wonder what it's like there, like what they did with energy and where they're at now, if they were that far ahead 15 years ago. I think about the tree canopy. I love the idea of adding even more trees. I love the idea of walking safety. I think about my neighborhood. I have one sidewalk on my street and there's a lot of children that walk up and down my street. A lady got hit last week. It's like, if we increase that safety, maybe people feel safer, they want to walk more, they'll use those modes of transportation. And also with the Community Choice Energy, thinking about how we can challenge ourselves to take this Climate Action Plan a step further and go towards that 100% renewable goal. I talked about this at the Planning Commission meeting, learning about a city in Texas. And Texas, like the city, it's surrounded by petroleum because it's in Texas, and this mayor there is taking his city to 100% renewables. It's in Georgetown, Texas, and so all this money that he's saving on energy costs, he gets to put it into his community, which I think is really cool. It's like you are literally investing in yourself because energy is the issue of our time. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Scott Sexton, followed by Sharon, it looks like, I want to say Alvis Stigley? Okay, thanks. And then followed by Katuyo Fukuyama.
Good evening, my name's Scott Sexton. I'm a resident for 30 years in Vista. I'd like to urge you to look at what San Diego and Chula Vista and other communities have adopted in the way of 100% goals, and it seems like the best way to attain that might be the Community Energy Plan or the Community Choice Energy Plan. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sharon, followed by Katuyo Fukuyama, and followed by Nancy, I love that. She wrote, how does it pronounce her last name? Nancy Ashly.
Good evening. My name's Sharon Alvis Stigley, and I'm here tonight to just express my support for Community Choice Energy. It's a wonderful opportunity to provide local, clean, renewable energy to Vista and at more reasonable prices than we are experiencing from SDG&E. Plus, it gives us local control of each of the modalities that we want to implement in reaching our energy goals. Your City Planning Commission also expressed some positive responses when I, a lot of us were at this Planning Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. And I don't know if any of you have seen the Lancaster Plan. While Lancaster is a much bigger city than we are, they have a lot of things that we could use in reaching our goals. And also you were asking about the school district. Speak to Rich Alderson from the school board. He is quite knowledgeable about things that they could save in the school district and spoke positively at the Planning Commission. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Katuyo Fukuyama, followed by Nancy Ashly, followed by Jonathan Coino. Jonathan told me how to pronounce his last name, too. I must, Coino, yeah. He ordered Coino here.
Good evening, my name is Katuyo Fukuyama. Thank you, Mayor and the City Council for this opportunity. I do like to support CCE, Community Choice Energy. I'd like to have it in the Climate Action Plan. As Sharon said, City of Lancaster, you know that the mayor is a Republican who is so successful, they even sell surplus energy to neighboring cities. And anyway, that's Lancaster. Encinitas, in our own North County coastal city, just passed the plan in January. They do have CCE in their plan. Anyway, they listed seven categories in order to accomplish their target by 2020, which is two years from now, and 2030 or '35, I don't remember, sorry. But I'd like to mention about three items that this city can do also. The first one is easy, I think. Require solar hot water heaters in every new homes. I believe you can do that. Second is transitioning all city government passenger vehicles and light trucks to zero emission vehicles by 2020. Again, it's only two years from now. They got ambition. I know they can do it. And having all of the city heavy equipment running, heavy equipment running on renewable diesel fuel by 2030. We'll see how it goes, but I think- see how it goes. But I think they're ambitious enough, they can do it. The last one is a big thing, the community choice energy. Nonprofit government entity, it's not SDGE, tasked with procuring electric power and particularly solar and wind power for residents and businesses. Vista should be proactive. Vista should not wait until every city in this San Diego County follow this community choice energy. We all profit, we all benefit from the ambitious plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nancy Ashley, followed by Jonathan, followed by Janice Jones.
Thank you, council members, for allowing us to speak tonight. I've lived in the city of Vista for 29 years now. I have solar panels on my house, and as you could see, I support community choice energy. And I'm very excited that we have a climate action plan update happening here. Just a little over a year ago, I found out that Vista had a climate action plan, and I'm like, what? Okay, so I've lived here for a long time, and I'm pretty active in my community, and I'd never heard that Vista had a climate action plan. So I went on your website, and I looked for it, and I looked for it, and I looked for it, and I couldn't find it. So my request is that when we pass a fabulous action, climate action plan, which I'm sure we will, that it be upfront and visible for everybody to find because it's something that we should be proud of. So that's one of my requests. And my other request is that we implement a public implementation task force so that the community can be involved in making sure that we actually follow through on these goals, and they know what they're all about. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan, Jonathan Coino, followed by Janice Jones.
Good evening. Thank you, council members.
I'm teasing you. Thanks, Jonathan.
I'm going to take a different tact here about the climate action plan because it's a wonderful thing that we do have it. Like some speakers said, we have, and we've needed it for a long time. When I first saw this, and I think it was 2014, you know, I was like, okay, read through this whole thing, and it's great. There's so many rules, so many regulations to reduce, recover, whatever. And I'm like, okay, great. Now we're here in 2018, and then when I was at the Planning Commission, we're talking about 2025, we're talking about 2030, we're talking about 2035. I'm like, oh my goodness, that's like 30 years. One of the things that I think that we all need to consider, just not by reducing, which is a great thing, is the education of our precious resource. The precious resource we have in the city of Vista are our kids, the children. And in the schools today, we, I believe, we don't do enough to educate them about climate action. And the simple thing that we can do is a zero-waste program. I was involved with the school, elementary school in Oceanside, that was one of the first cities in the state of California to become zero-waste certified. And in the process, they got the city council to become zero-waste certified. In the process, they got the waste management to be certified for zero-waste. And here we are here today, four years later, and I just think that when we have these plans, there should be funds set aside or a committee set aside to help initiate our precious resource, kids, who are going to be living here 30 years from now. Because if you don't change the mindset of the children of Vista, how are we ever going to change true climate action? The school that is in Oceanside, it's zero-waste, has their own aquaponics. They have their own composting facility. They have third graders telling me that I shouldn't be throwing something in the trash can when I walk on, when we do an audit there. I'm like, whoa. You know, that school also sold their vegetables from composting to Belching Beaver and Tavern right down here in downtown. So again, think about our precious resource, the kids, and do something for them because they're going to be here long before this thing happens. Or at least, you know what I'm saying. So at the end of the day, just think about doing something, like you said, with the school district and really making it a choice because kids are what's going to change the parents' minds when they say, hey, don't throw that straw in the street, or don't throw that straw in the trash can. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Janice Jones?
Hi. Thanks for the opportunity. Jonathan and I actually have a connection through Oceanside. I live in Vista, but I'm an educator in Oceanside. And his sister actually had a big influence on me because she was one of, worked with the city in implementing the zero-waste schools program in Oceanside. And the deputy mayor, early on in the evening, mentioned the busing and that being an issue with climate change. But one of the things that we don't talk about that has a huge impact on climate change is our trash, our waste. The more of it that goes to the landfill, the more emissions are put into the atmosphere and causing all kinds of problems. So one of the easiest, one of the easiest impacts we can have on greenhouse emissions is to reduce our waste. And in Oceanside, we began with the schools a few years ago. I'm not at the site that Jonathan mentioned. I'm at another site because that program became pervasive throughout the district. And the city staff worked with us. They came in, they trained us, they gave us the materials, they gave us incentives. My site actually won a $500 award from Waste Management for our efforts to reduce waste. So it was really a powerful program for staff and for students, and that's the most important thing. We're teaching our kids to be green stewards. And as Jonathan said, in 2035 and 2050, they're the ones that are going to be carrying on this legacy and hoping, hopefully making the world a better place. So I hope to see zero-waste become more integral to this plan. And however I could help with my experience in Oceanside by connecting, talking to people at the schools, connecting with people in Oceanside to help move zero-waste schools forward. I would be more than happy to do that. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And thanks for the plan. Yeah.
Thank you so much. And that actually completes our speakers. Thank all the speakers. There's a lot of you tonight, and you did a great job. So I will move on, and I will call on Councilwoman Franklin as the next one on tap here.
One of the issues that staff asked for some guidance on are the recommendations that are on page three of 253. And I just wanted to invite my colleagues to take a look at that list with me. Maybe we could give guidance to Mr. Conley on those items. There's a few of those that I support and I'd like to include. And I just ordered them for ease of consideration from top to bottom. So if you look down to number three, where the commission suggested balancing energy efficiency goals, I think that's an important measure. Also, the next one, number four, pursue a parks master plan to identify acquisition. This is one of our goals, I think we talked about, is developing a plan to acquire parklands. Definitely something that we should be putting some thought into. Moving on to number six, evaluate the potential for additional electric vehicle charging stations. I know that SDGNE has offered to partner with us to help us do that, even sometimes maybe at a reduced cost to the city. We have two new charging stations coming online at the Norm Reeves Honda, which is excellent, and encourage we continue to look for more places to do that. Number seven, evaluate additional opportunities to install photovoltaic on city structures. I'd like to continue to see cost-benefit analysis on those types of opportunities, particularly where we could not only reduce emissions but achieve an efficiency for taxpayers. I support that. Number nine, increase the urban tree canopy. Maybe we could do better than 500 trees over X number of years. I actually am a big believer in promoting the planting of trees. You know, it's one of the things I really love about Vista is the number of mature trees we have, and certainly some parts of town, we could do better for future generations. And, you know, I'm just thinking about the trees that I enjoy the most are the ones that were planted about the year I was born. So it's a serious thing. If we don't plant them, our children won't be able to enjoy them because you can't plant a 40-year-old tree. You can't plant a 30-year-old tree. You have to plant them and nurse them. And if our generation doesn't do that. So I like to take, that's something I think we should take a real serious look at. I love trees. I just, they beautify our world. They make our planet cleaner, but they beautify our world. They make our, they really go right to decreasing blight and increasing the appearance of our city. Really just makes it, you know, I love to come to a place with mature trees. It's awesome. Let's see. And then the last one, I agree with engaging VUSD and having that conversation with them. So I don't know if I missed anything there that my colleagues want to comment on, but those were the ones that I wanted to see included. Also wanted to, don't need an answer on it now, but I'd like to know if we could follow up on a question. A lot of times, the costs that are being covered by Sandag, a lot of times we have recurring costs that are covered by a short-term plan, and they aren't covered or guaranteed to be covered in the long run. I'd like to know, I always like to know whenever we accept any money, if we have any potential for abandonment of recurring revenue. Again, don't need to get into that now, but I think that's something we want to look at in the final plan. I don't like to be saddled with obligations that have recurring costs and without a guaranteed source of recurring revenue. And yeah, I think that's the end of my questions and comments right now. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green?
All right. Thank you. I also went down the list of the items here on page three. Before I get started, though, I did want to speak real quick to the food waste, the diversion and the recycling of it. I'm on the board at RISL, which is the Regional Solid Waste Authority. It's a joint, JPA Joint Power Authority with other cities here in our community. And we work with EDCO. They come and they present to us all the time. And the waste that you guys throw away, you might not know this right now, but it is basically right at 100% recycled. EDCO insists that they're actually going to be at a negative carbon footprint within the next couple of years. We have one of the most high-tech recycling facilities in the entire country. Actually, when it was built, it was the most innovative recycling facility in the country. But as you know, with technology, things are outdated basically daily. But EDCO, and you'll notice, as they drive around, they used to use CNG, which is Clean Natural Gas, and now all of their fleet has been changed to RNG, which is actually renewable natural gas. And it's being powered through the methane from your recycled organics. So all that food that you throw away right now does get recycled and reused, compressed, and that methane gas actually powers their fleet of trucks right now. So we've been given a lot of mandates from the state on what we're required to recycle from a waste standpoint. And in North County, we're actually a little ahead of the curve. I believe that the numbers were by 2022, they wanted us 65%, and by 2025, they want us at 80%. And those are the numbers I had written down from my last meeting. We're really close to that. And like I say, EDCO insists they're going to be the negative carbon footprint within the next couple of years. So if you guys ever want to meet with me and go tour that facility, it's amazing to see the technology, to just watch the paper and the metal and the food and everything being sorted and put into the different vats. I sound excited about it because I spent two hours touring it. It was frickin' awesome. So anyways, I want to let you know that's something that we work on. Reduce, recycle, reuse. Reduce, recycle, reuse. It's pounded in my head. Last name like Green, how can I not want to be green? So anyway, with that, I'm going to get onto this list right here. A lot, and I don't know how my colleagues feel about consumer choice energy. And to be honest, I don't really know how I feel about it because it's new. Anytime there's something new, I always want to get a lot of information on it before I make a big decision like that. I know that regardless of what we do, SDGNE does have the infrastructure to deliver the power, so there will be some type of working with them from an infrastructure standpoint. But you guys brought up the city of Lancaster, and I did investigate the city of Lancaster, and it looks like the residents are saving about 4.6% on their monthly utility bills. On a, you know, a city that size, I'm sure that's a big tangible financial, you know, investment that's being made in the community by the amount of money that they're saving through CCE. So I'd like to look into that a little more. But at the same token, I know I met with SDGNE, and I know they're working towards providing clean energy as well. Like Addie said, they are at 45% clean energy. They provide the option to get clean energy. You know, a newer program that they've been rolling out, too. We're all just trying to meet the needs of our constituents as they come forward. So I do definitely want to look into that more. Pretty much what Councilwoman Franklin went over, update should balance energy efficiency goals. The city should also be pursuing parks master plan to identify key acquisitions from the land bank. I'm not really into that. Also, evaluate the potential for additional electric vehicle charging infrastructure stations. Super big. I'd like to have an electric vehicle soon. Evaluate additional opportunities to install solar panels on city structures. Oceanside has done a lot of that, even just driving down Mesa yesterday, rolling by Martin Luther King Park, all of their parking structures are all solar. And as a consumer, I've been told, if you can come out of pocket and pay for the system, that's where the real savings occur. You know, average system, you know, say 12,000 bucks, over 48 months, you recoup the entire cost of the system, which is four years. For 26 years, that's huge savings. So I definitely like to look into long-term savings on implementing some solar. More trees, good, like that. Also, provide additional information and opportunities for organic recycling. I'd like us to work with EDCO, and at RISL, we've already spoken with them about sending mailers and information out to the community, what they're doing. Yeah, I know because I sit on a board with them and have to meet with them every 90 days. But I would love for our city to contact EDCO and see if maybe they can put some type of informational piece on what they're doing to all of our constituents because they are, you know, doing a whole lot from that aspect. Engaging Vista Unified, I have four kids in Vista Unified. I'm only elected because of all the work that I did for 10 years in Vista Unified, so I will definitely be, you know, harassing everybody I know at Vista Unified to kind of work with us to do as much as we can within the city because it is very disappointing that there is no, you know, renewable energy projects going on that I'm aware of anywhere within our city. So there's some direction. And thank you so much for your work, Mr. Conley. I know you put tons of hours into this, and you're an amazing man. Thank you for working for Vista.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everybody who spoke tonight. We all appreciate very much hearing your thoughts on these issues, and I appreciate you coming out and spending your evening with us, and to staff for this report, a very good report. I just wanted to reiterate what the deputy mayor said about, I serve on the Sandag Regional Energy Working Group, and I go to these meetings every month, and we have this big roundtable discussion with representatives from around the region, in the municipalities, but also with SDGNE, UCSD, the Clean Energy Center, and so many others. I can't even remember all the names of the stakeholders. And we talk about all of these things. We talk about bicycling. We talk about the pedestrian paths. We talk about renewable energy. We talk about food digesters and composting. And I have to reiterate, every time we talk about updating climate action plans, whenever it's time for the cities and the state or the county to do this, they really do hold Vista up, and it's always up on the screen, and they talk about some of the things that we're doing in our community. So we have been a leader for other communities, maybe not all of the communities, but we are doing a good job. That doesn't mean there isn't more that we can do. So I really do appreciate that. And on the food waste, I'm glad that Joe mentioned that because we also have had those discussions at Encina, and as, like I said, at the Regional Energy Working Group, and how we can get that going. And it really is something that's already being done, and they're using that, the energy that comes from that for these things. So that's doing really well. And as far as the community energy, community choice energy, again, I don't have enough information to really comment one way or the other on it. There are, I have a lot of questions. I have a page of questions that I'd like answered about community choice energy. And so I would just ask staff if we could, you know, get the complete picture on what it is, what it does, how it works, et cetera, before we can really get down into the weeds on that topic. But I'm willing to get down into the weeds on that topic. So going back to the recommendations that we received from the Planning Commission, I actually, I think I have the same ones as Councilman Franklin. Update should include balancing energy efficiency goals with the ability to accommodate future building, and understanding that some of the measures could create cost prohibitions for certain projects. As you all know, I was a Parks and Recreation Commissioner before I got elected to the city council, and a parks master plan has been something I've been talking about for 10 years, so 11 years. So I would really like to see us actually pursue a parks master plan. And I know that we talked about this at our goal-setting section, as well as finding opportunities to purchase land to create more open space and park space for the city. So that's definitely high on my list, as well as evaluating the potential for additional for additional EV charging infrastructure and stations. And I had a bracket, putting that one with the next one, to evaluate opportunities for solar photovoltaic panels on city structures. And then increasing the urban tree canopy. And I was talking to the city manager about this, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, a month ago. I read an article, and I don't remember where, about Denver, Colorado. And it's now mandatory in Denver, Colorado, for new build to have canopy of trees on their rooftops. And they had a whole list in this article of all the benefits of having that, including reducing the temperature, you know, overall, they had a significant reduction in the air temperature as well as the ground temperature, as well as cleaner air, et cetera, et cetera. But it was a fascinating article. And if I can find it, I'll post it on my Facebook page. So I'm very much in favor for tree canopies wherever we can have tree canopies, as well as just more trees everywhere. And providing additional information through EDCO to our community, to our residents about what programs that they have. I think that goes back toward what one of our speakers commented about education. I think that was Jonathan and maybe another one. We really do need to work on getting education out into the community as a whole, as well as through the school district. So I also would definitely support. And I know that we've reached out to the school district before and haven't really had much of a response, but we can, you know, keep trying to reach out and see if they'll join us on some of these things. And the buses issue, again, that's something that we've been talking about here for years and years because the elimination of the buses has caused a lot of traffic and a lot of chaos in some of the communities. So we need to talk to them about what we can do about perhaps streamlining their traffic lines. I don't know how they would want to work on that, but we have huge, huge, long lines of traffic around our schools twice a day. So those would be the ones that I would like to see more discussion on or more information on. So I hope that is helpful for direction. And thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I just, I guess, reiterate what we've already heard. I don't want to go line by line. I think you've got plenty of direction. A couple of things I want to make sure that we discuss that I heard from the public tonight. Who is the most vulnerable? Is that identified in our plan? And is that something, I mean, is that something we can do?
We can do it. There's probably a cost involved, so I can evaluate what that would be and come back to the council with that information.
I think that would be important. I think there's some good points made there. And I think that we are probably, I'm guessing, that we're probably doing the right thing. You know, we're trying to concentrate. You know, we're putting, say, sidewalks in the areas that are probably the most vulnerable. We're doing the transit-oriented developments in that and those areas. These are all good things, but we don't know until we know.
Sure.
Right? So I think that would be the only thing I would like to add in addition to just kind of reiterate my original idea of getting together with VUSD, you know, the buses, I think, education, find out what kind of educational programs they have for children. I think those are good points that are being made on that. And then someone mentioned about our plan not being on the website. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but...
It's not easily found. It's true. So we'll make sure that happens.
So if we can make that a little bit easier, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
And interestingly, I had all the same exact bullets checked that started with John did, all of we, you know, repeated all that, so I won't read them all. So John, do you have enough direction from all of us?
I do. I just want to comment that I appreciate all your input, but I can say that the measures that we've identified to look at aren't going to get us there. We're going to have to look at some other things that are a little more extreme to get to the 2035 goal that's been established. So we are going to have a series of workshops. We are going to come back to the council with some more detailed information. I will present or have a more studied presenter on CCE so that you can get some more information. And we'll come back with a more thorough list, but we'll definitely evaluate all the things that you've identified and come back with a report on where it does get us.
Okay. And the community choice energy, isn't there like right now a study out there that hasn't come in yet?
There is a study the coastal cities are undertaking. We are waiting for that. We expect it hopefully later this year, and we'll be presenting that information to you as well.
Yeah, I'd like to see the information when it comes in on that. So, okay. So with that, I think if we have enough information, we can move on to our second, second and our last discussion items. It's potential general plan amendment and zone change on the north side of Thibodeau Road between Watson Way and Thibodeau Court. So Director Conley is going to stay right there and provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an evaluation of a possible general plan amendment and zone change for the north side of Thibodeau Road located between Watson Way and Thibodeau Court. There are 19 homes currently in this area, which are shown on the right side of the slide here. The general plan designation of these parcels is currently commercial service, and the zoning designation is C1 or commercial retail. These properties were, this is just a little better map to show you the area that's loaded that we're discussing. These properties were annexed into Vista in 1980 and zoned R1 at that time, which is a single-family residential zone, 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. In 1982, they were moved into specific Plan 21, which was a specific plan adopted for the commercial area surrounding Thibodeau down to Shatter Ridge Drive. They were zoned commercial at that time, and there were some minimum lot sizes established for commercial development where it promoted combining lots in order to develop them for commercial use. The specific plan was appealed in 2012, and the standard C1 zoning is now in effect on these properties. Most of these properties were developed and continue to be used for residential, single-family purposes. The zoning that was established in 1982 creates a legal non-conforming use with respect to residential uses. So the use can continue, but they can't do improvements to their property or obtain building permits to make improvements. Those kinds of things are restricted. The intent there is to limit the improvements that the properties can make so that they eventually convert to the zoning that's established. But because the commercial zoning has been in place now for 30-plus years, and we haven't seen much in the way of conversion with these properties, we get a lot of questions at the counter from homeowners that either want to move or are moving into these properties and want to make improvements, and it limits what they can do. So the staff is requesting the council's direction tonight as to whether or not we want to evaluate amending the general plan and zoning to bring them back to a single-family residential designation. And following the council's direction, we can come back with a formal amendment. And that completes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
I'll wait to hear the public speakers.
Okay, I have three speakers. Okay, I'll start with James Clark, followed by, looks like Lennox Quinn. No. Oh, city attorney wants to say something. I'm sorry. I didn't see his.
We know we have some speakers here tonight who are concerned about the marijuana dispensary at 2082 Thibodeau and wanted to bring it to our attention. I wanted to let you know it already has our attention, and we are moving aggressively to try to eliminate that use, obviously because we have to follow the law. We can't do it overnight, but it is very much in our sights and will be dealt with. For those of you who may not know, the owner of that particular building who leased it for that use is actually right behind you in Industrial Court and is a business owner. He bought it in February 7, and somehow a marijuana store immediately came in. So for those of you who might happen to know your neighbor, Lee Bitner, and his business, you might want to let him know your views on that. Thank you.
Okay, with that, then we'll move to our speakers. James Clark first, followed by Lennox Quinn, followed by Griselda Soto.
Thank you, Mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. And thank you very much for responding to that issue because it is an ongoing problem. It is a terrible situation right now. So quickly if that can be resolved, we certainly would appreciate it. I've been a resident here in Vista for 18 years, and I've owned the property of one of these affected homes for 10 years. We got that not realizing it was on commercial. Now, partly our fault for not doing due diligence because we bought it as a foreclosure. So we did run into that whole issue, was mentioned already, of not being able to get the needed permits to make changes and upgrades to the house that we wanted to do. So it definitely has affected us. It's affected us in number way twos. We've two different times tried to refinance. But because it's commercial, we can't get a residential loan, which was odd to us that they gave us one to start with, but now we can't do anything with it. So it has created a lot of problems. Also, too, the street has a lot of traffic. So nothing really has been done to the street fronts. We have erosion going on of the road, which has been a problem. And just, really in just the last month, there was some patchwork done. But with the big, whenever it rains, it just tears up that road. So hopefully rezoning it to residential might allow some street improvements as far as curb and gutter and sidewalk. We certainly would like to see that. There is a lot of children in some of those homes, too. So we have that danger of that traffic running by. So anything that we could be done to improve the streets would certainly be appreciated. But I think this proposal or this idea of going back to zoning for residential, it is going to help those. They've been residential homes for 60 years. So I'm sure there was good reason to change it to want to go to commercial storefront, but the practicality of it and the homeowners that are there now, you know, we have no intention of going anywhere. We just like to improve our homes. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Lennox? Or is it Lynette? No, Lynell? Quinn? Oh, there.
Thank you for having us, council and all. I happen to live right next door to the marijuana dispensary. And if you can imagine living on your nice little street with children and easygoing community, doing everything you can to make your home very comfortable, taking pride in it, and then all of a sudden, you have 24 hours of a horrible smell. I live alone. I feel very vulnerable. 24 hours, the doors are slamming on the cars, coming and going, not to mention the traffic. I am so unhappy. And I've lived there 38 years, and I've been happy all along. And I hope this can change. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Griselda?
Yes, Griselda Soto.
Yes.
Hi, I've been a resident of Vista for eight years. We've been at our home for about seven. I only have concerns of changing it from commercial to residential because of the property values. So I'm not sure if that's going to change and it's going to take an impact on myself, since I see it as, you know, eventually my retirement home, or maybe even selling it and buying a different home. But if the value goes down, I don't see that happening. With the pot dispensary, I'm glad you guys are taking action on it. I've had people throughout the day, throughout the night, knocking on my door thinking that's the place because they don't have the right address. My neighbor, we've talked, people have gone to his house. We've actually called the cops, and he had to fill out a report. So I'm not sure if changing it from commercial residential just to residential is going to eliminate that problem in general, or if it's just a way for, you know, just for us to be able to develop onto our home. So I would appreciate if someone can get back to me or if that gets just documented so that me as a homeowner, I'm making the right decision when you guys decide to vote. I'm prepared to talk to you guys about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And she's our last speaker, so I'll go to Councilmember Franklin.
Well, I want to thank the city staff for putting this item on the agenda at my request. I have, I drive past and have for 14 years now. Every day I drive several times down Thibodeau Road, and I view it as a gateway into our neighborhood. And I have noticed the erosion issue is a constant. And I have been asking for three and a half years for dollars to improve and build a gutter there. I've observed that most of the residents have concrete driveways that extend halfway through the road. But because of some of these issues, they haven't, for whatever reason, had the ability or been willing to build the concrete down to the street. And I have asked the city staff to look into the potential to offer, to ask if in the future we could do like a rolled asphalt curb, which would be an immediate alternative, that perhaps we could negotiate with the, or ask the contractor that does the work to negotiate with the homeowners to perhaps replace a lot of the rock that's there for homeowners that want to do it, to maybe replace some of the asphalt that had reduced the cost to the homeowners, just as an option for folks. But I want to beautify that stretch. I want to improve your property values. And let me speak for a minute to you about the illegal marijuana dispensary. You have no idea how very extremely angry that I am about this. This is my neighborhood. And I don't have the proper words. I'm very, very angry. I want to make clear that whatever our outcome on the question about marijuana is, we're a city, and I hope a state, and a federal government of laws, and all persons are expected to abide by the law because the law is here to protect all of us. And those individuals who have chosen to victimize the residents that live in my district and in your districts by putting marijuana dispensaries into residential neighborhoods, I cannot express to you my desire to see them punished according to the most stringent possible. I met personally today with Adam Braverman, who was today sworn in as, it was confirmed today, as our new U.S. Attorney. He has expressed a willingness to assist us with some federal law enforcement. We're still working on exactly what that's going to look like. But I want the citizens of Vista to understand how passionate I am about stopping people from doing things like what this individual who has opened this business in a residential area has done. I could not be stronger in my anger and my motivation to do something about it. And I am visiting nearly daily with the city attorney and the city manager about the status of law enforcement operations against that particular business. I have, for many months now, corresponded regularly with homeowners in your districts who have marijuana businesses next to their homes. These are not victimless crimes. This is destroying the enjoyment of our residents' ability to quietly enjoy their homes. It is, again, whatever your opinion on legalizing marijuana, the individuals who victimize our residents should be dealt with harshly. We can't allow it. We've got to be of a like mind on that as a separate question from the issue of legalizing marijuana. The issues have no relevance to one another. Just because you're in favor of legal access to marijuana does not mean that you should think that our residents have to have people at all hours of the day and night coming into their residential neighborhoods in violation of our city's laws and of our nation's laws. I did not initiate this item, interestingly enough, as a response. I drove by the former sheriff's substation about a week ago, and I noticed a lot of cars in front. And I called the city manager, and I said, "Did somebody pull a business permit?" I hadn't realized there was a business that was occupying that now. And that's when I got the bad news, that about a day earlier, they had learned that there was a marijuana dispensary there. But I actually asked to rezone this land because I thought it would be the best for the beautification of the area and for your property values. I did not realize, but I am delighted to learn, that there is a benefit. And I hadn't realized that because of the zoning, you had issues with financing and issues with approving projects. And I'm so sorry I wasn't aware of that earlier, or I would have really pressed on this much sooner. It's been a long-term item on my agenda to accomplish. Thank you very much for taking the time to come and share that with us because that really helps us to understand what an important thing this is to do. And I just really appreciate my call. And I just really appreciate my colleagues' time in considering this issue. It's going to achieve one of our core values, our core goals of beautification, and it is going to assist us. And the original purpose in zoning this land commercial, if you look at the map here, the Thibodeau Industrial Court, originally the concept was that that entire block of land would be acquired, that all those homes would be acquired, and that the industrial park would come up to Thibodeau on both sides. But the developer of that project was never able to acquire enough of the homes to make that viable. And so therefore, these homes continue to stand and they're nice homes. I often stop at the gentleman who's at the upper end, what's it, Watson Way has done some, Watson Way and Thibodeau, the gentleman on the corner has done some really nice flower plantings. And I often pull over and just tell him, "Thank you for making our street and our neighborhood look beautiful." So I want to help you with regard to the woman who asked about the value of her home. It is my sincere hope that this will increase your property value and that's why I brought it forward. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for the report on this and thank you for bringing this up. I think this is something that is long overdue to be done and also I apologize for that. This is something that should have been done a long time ago. And so I'm going to, was that a motion?
Thank you, yes.
I will second your motion to approve this. And also just to comment on the marijuana, that is very frustrating that that's happening and it's even more frustrating that it takes so long to deal with that. I'm of the mindset that if you have an illegal business in Vista, we should just be able to go in and shut it down. So it's very frustrating that there are so many loopholes that we have to go through and it takes patience to go through that, but we will go through that and get it shut down as soon as we can. So thank you for doing this and I look forward to all the new plantings and flowers and the road improvements. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Green.
All right. I also drive down Thibodeau all the time. They got the best big man's clothes ever at Burlington Coat Factory. If you're a triple XL, hit that place up. But I just wanted to speak, my colleague here, Councilmember Franklin, we do have differing opinions on medical marijuana and legalization, but I do want to make sure that my citizens of Vista are completely clear that I am totally against any type of marijuana dispensary establishment in any type of residential neighborhood. And I also agree that the swiftest and most severe punishments should come down on anybody who are breaking our land use laws from that aspect. I also own a property here in Vista on Foothill Drive and I would be beside myself if I had to go through the things that this lovely woman over here has to go through. And as a single woman living in a house by herself, being vulnerable with that population constantly next to your home, I can't imagine the fear that you live in. And as a city official, I apologize that we haven't been able to rectify this sooner and I hope that we can come up with some solution where we can stop these a lot sooner so that you don't have to live in fear on a daily basis. The other thing is I wanted to address the lady who talked about her property values. I've been a real estate agent in North County here for over 20 years and it will, in my opinion, the changing of the zoning will allow you to open up your property to more buyers. It's more easy to obtain financing on a property that's zoned R1. They can get government loans, conventional loans, any type of loan they need to. And as a property zoned C1, you're going to, it's going to be real tough to find financing. Typically requires a much larger down payment. So I would think the availability to market and also with the improvements that Councilmember Franklin's talking about, you know, to the walkability of the neighborhood and just kind of the whole aesthetic appeal of your neighborhood, I really feel like as a city, we're doing good work for you with this. So I also appreciate Councilmember Franklin bringing this forward and I also just want to make sure that I reiterate again my stance on marijuana dispensaries in residential neighborhoods. Big no-no's. Get 'em, Darrell. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
Hey, just the last thought I wanted to offer, you know, I've been talking about inline parks and miniature parks and I have talked to staff several times, going back several months, about the small piece of land that the city of Vista already owns. If you look at where the Thibodeau Court property, Thibodeau would sort of continue on, but there's a Y right there where there's that curve. I don't quite have Patrick sold on this idea yet, but what I would really like to see is I would really like to see that piece of extremely visible land, the residents that live there know that there were recently some large corrugated plastic pipes and other things stored there and that is not an appropriate place to store those things. And I apologize that you had to look at that. I wasn't consulted on that and I know it's city land, but we have other places to store things like that. I think that would be ideal just for some manicured turf and it would really beautify the area in front of your home. And what I would really like to see happen is I would really like to see our former substation. I'd really like to see that and the adjacent parcel that's undeveloped. I would really love to see that built into a little parquet, just a little open space, maybe a playground equipment or something that makes that strip of homes more beautiful and more enjoyable. It's just a thought I'm having and I want to pursue, but thank you again for your time.
Councilmember Rigby.
I'm going to second that too because I think that's the perfect place for a pocket park, which was one of the discussions we had in our goal-setting session, to have more parks in our community, no matter the size and location, for beautification of all of our neighborhoods. So if we can look at that, maybe revisit that, that would be great. So thank you.
I actually agree with that also, so. But I think John has enough direction from us. I just asked him, we don't need to vote, they said, so.
There's no need for a vote as long as the council supports the motion or the direction, I'll bring back a formal amendment.
You'll bring it back and we will have a vote on it in what, about another four weeks or something?
I have to go to the planning commission first, so it'll probably take a couple months to get back in front of the council.
Right. There's, just so you know, there's a legal process that we have to go through here because it's a zone change amendment, but it'll come back to us and we will vote on it.
Likely in May.
Okay, thank you very much.
In the meantime, they hope to work on closing the marijuana place.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So with that, I don't have any oral communication speakers. You'll be happy to hear that we, now we can move on to, I have my mayor's comments. Am I, that's where I am? Okay. I'm sure I didn't have anything I'm forgetting. Okay, so I have, it's Parents Night Out this Friday, yay, March 16th at the Jim Porter Recreation Center. Parents can drop off children ages five to 11 years old for a fun evening of activities and games from 5 until 9 o'clock at night. Cost is $10 per child. Registration is online at citia vista dot com or by calling the recreation division at 760-639-6151. And second, the Vista Library is holding a free concert with American Irish singer Gregory Page on Sunday, March 18th at 1:30. For more information, contact the library at 760-643-5100. And third, McClellan Senior Center is providing, oh, it's tax time, you guys. It's coming up. McClellan Senior Center is providing free assistance with taxes for the 2017 tax year. ARP volunteers are available between 9 and 2 on Monday, Wednesday and Friday through April 17th. So if you want an appointment, you need to call 760-643-5290 to make that appointment. And so walk-ins are also available. So those are my announcements and then just a couple of things I was going to say that meetings that I've been to, real quick, like this weekend, we went to the Serpent International of Vista in North County and then they had a Live Your Dream Awards and they awarded three different gals who are single mothers and with children that are going to school and they awarded them money to go to school, $5,000 scholarship and they actually got, each got a laptop computer and a printer. It was very nice. And two of them actually are living at Solutions for Change, which I thought was kind of interesting. So that was kind of an interesting thing. So it was there, it was Elena and Linda and Grace. So that was that. And at Sandag, we talked about the regional housing needs assessment, the RENA numbers, and that's coming up down at Sandag. Those numbers are given by the state and they, usually Sandag will go to our general plans and pull the numbers from there, but they, we have such a housing shortage, it was kind of interesting, I thought, that between 1955 and 1989, we built an average, they had an average of new housing permits, 205,000 was the average number of housing permits per year. And between 2007 and 2016, we only built 80,000 permits per year. And so, and over the past seven years, actually, only 50,000 permits or 7,000, there total in those seven years, so 7,000 units a year is all the permits that have been pulled. So that's one of the things that's causing the housing shortage. But the state has put out new goals of 18,000 units per year or 171,685 units to be, you know, made in the future. So it's going to be, going to be interesting how we're going to do that and they're, but they're, they have SB 35, which is coming up, which gives a streamlined approval process. It says a development must be on a full site and comply with existing zoning and the development must provide at least 10% units for lower income families and pay construction workers prevailing wages. So I don't know how many will go after that, but it, you know, makes it more expensive, the project. So SB 35, but they also, there's SB 72, which is going to authorize enforcement of the housing element law and it enables any violations to be referred to the attorney general. So if we don't bill them, I don't know what they would do to us, but anyway, so that's all for, you know, low-income housing. But there's a lot more going on with that. We'll bring you more of a thing on that later. And today we had the Innovate 78, our quarterly report about what the progress, and we're going to actually bring that here and do the report here, but there was an interesting inclusive growth overview, which is they're doing for the, San Diego EDC is doing that. So anyway, I thought that was kind of interesting and we're going to bring that back to you guys here. So those are the things that I have on my agenda. So I'll pass it on to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I guess, report out on NCTD having an emergency drill last week. So they had an active shooter emergency drill, so they went through and went through the, it's unfortunate times, yes, that we have to do that, but they went ahead and went through the activity of helping the individuals that were injured, you know? But they also went through and they did get the shooter, so that was good. But anyways, I just thought it was interesting and important for people to know that it's something that NCTD unfortunately has to prepare for and they are doing in these times. So stay safe. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby. Councilmember Franklin, anything? How about Councilmember Green?
Huge fan of fun over here, let me tell you about it. One of the things that I wanted to do when I got elected was work more with our kids and our seniors in our school district and I'm happy to say that on March 21st at 11:00 a.m., Roosevelt Middle School students will be going to our senior center to perform for our seniors. And this is the first of two performances that we've set up with Vista Unified School District, just trying to get more of our seniors at our senior center and entertain them. So it's real cool to get our youth and our seniors connected. They got a lot to learn from each other, so I'm pretty stoked on that. I also just want to thank you guys all for showing up and for all your comments and for being amazing Vistans. Have a great night.
And before I pass it out to Patrick, I left you Innovate 78, which has a lot of statistics in there for the, for you to look at. And then also the Open Source Makers Labs in Vista, which is, it's doing very well and it actually is a high-tech digital fabrication lab and incubator space where companies can innovate design and build almost anything they need. And they have a wide range of tools, equipment, engineering and design expertise to bring their ideas to life. And so this is a, this is really an important business in Vista and so I thought that I would just, I left you all a little keychain for that day. So anyway, that has to go with Innovate 78. So onward to Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor.
City manager.
In talking about your goals, we are holding a couple of community workshops for the future site of what may be called Palavista Park or another name, but along Civic Center Drive. City council, as all of you know, you purchased the land for that property and now we're talking to the public. On Thursday, March 15th at 6:00 p.m., we'll be meeting in the community room with the public to find out what their ideas are for that park, what kind of amenities they would like, as well as on Saturday, March 24th at 2:00 p.m., same place, community room, and you can get more information on the city's website. And then the last item that I wanted to mention as a public service announcement is that the lot at Michigan Avenue and Main Street downtown will be closed on Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
The parking lot.
The parking lot, excuse me, thank you.
Yes, that's okay.
We'll be doing some surveying work there, so it'll be closed that day. It'll also be closed on Wednesday, March 21st from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and we'll be doing some survey work that day as well. So, and two more quick items. One is go San Diego State Aztecs on Thursday, NCAA tournament, 4:20 on TBS. And then last, I wanted, I'm not going to have them come up, but I want to introduce, stand up in the back, Jack Reynolds. He is our new lieutenant for the Sheriff's Department, replaced Lieutenant Reilersdam. So welcome, Jack.
Welcome, Jack.
And that's it. Yes, and the city council is going to have a workshop on marijuana at 2:00 p.m. in this facility next Tuesday. Thank you.
Okay, how about our city attorney? Do you have anything tonight?
I don't think I have anything to add.
Okay. How about our city clerk down there? Kathy? No? Okay, with that, if nobody else says anything, we are adjourned at 7:58.